Welcome, everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting for Wednesday, May 24, 2017. I'd like to welcome everybody and open the meeting, and our first order of business will be to do the pledge.
The President and the Chairman, the Superintendent of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Go a little bit out of order so that we can get Mr. Ferry on his way, because he's got wood to split for the lions.
I'm still going to make you go first.
So, yeah, we have a recommendation about how we superintendent award a bid for Horton Street Culvert Replacement Project.
Thank you.
Do your thing.
Yes, yeah, I've all the information, the three bids are there.
Okay.
There's listed the three companies, I know they make pre-cast and they're all having to create the pre-cast on that. Not all of them bid on the actual culvert, they bid on pieces. So you got two bids on the retaining wall, you got two bids on the actual culvert, two footings.
And you see.
And when it scans out has all the pieces necessary to get this culvert joined with your approval, we can afford that tomorrow. It takes about a month to make all the pieces, so. If I were to back up a step, as you know, we have a problem with culvert on Horton Street. Still culvert has collapsed, our hall is about eight and a half feet long, it's been deep and it's checking again twice this week, it's getting wired. So it still weighs over, meaning everything in June, so we need to expect this or whenever closure definitely.
So drive carefully on Horton Street, I guess. So your recommendation is that we take the bid from J and R Pre-Cast? And that bid is, was, they were the lowest bidder, right?
Yes, he's the lowest bidder and also provide the retaining wall and the culvert footings.
So it's seventeen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars for the retaining wall? Is that the whole project?
That's, uh, that's the retaining wall and the culvert.
Oh, that's the total project?
Yep.
Okay.
Minus the gravel and stone.
Right.
And there's a chance we may need to hire a crane. Each piece is going to be seven to eight tons.
Yeah.
Would that be extra, or is that?
That would be extra if he saw if he needs crane for two hundred dollars or else it can start with air. It'd be useful to have him there because it's his product, you know, to make sure it's jointed right.
Is that, are they going to do the entire project?
Yes.
Labor materials, everything?
No, no, we do the installation, they're going to make the product.
So, are they going to, is the retaining wall pre-cast?
Yes. Uh, no, they're, like at Stow Gate Landing, the retaining wall made out of large blocks that lock together, that's, that's what I need to use. Because each side, you know it's on each side of their shoulder, so it's hard to tell how high up and how far down they have to go in a month.
So if you have to hire a crane, does the operator come with it, or do we have somebody that's qualified to operate a crane?
If I have to go with a crane, I will procure that one, again.
With an operator?
With an operator for the crane.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ferry? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board accept the recommendation of Mr. Ferry and award the contract for the Horton Street Culvert Replacement Project at the bid of seventeen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Just want to clarify that it's to...
J and R?
Was it coming?
J and R Pre-Cast of Berkeley, I guess.
Okay. Need further discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
If I, if I would, if I could bother yourself or Karen for that award letter, so we get that order that Owen put along, we can.
The letter's right here.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public input?
Excuse me, Tom, you're going to be here for this Eagle Scout?
Yes, I'll stick around and elaborate.
I think we're going to move that up also on the agenda. Sorry you had to go behind Tom, but, you know, the way it goes. Okay, so we have Samuel Blanchett for status update of his Eagle Scout project.
Hello. So, um, I completed my Eagle Scout, uh, my project from a couple months ago at the recreational facility next to the police station, and it acted as a picnic area. Pictures, I'd like to look at them. And, uh, I completed it a few months ago, but I haven't gotten around to doing this yet. Very busy with school, college, and work. Um, and I need your approval to continue to finish this up and for you to sign off on this.
So you, what else do you have to do with the project?
It's all finished.
It's finished, okay.
You just need the signature of the chairman.
To sign off that you've done it, great.
Does, does it have the Mr. Ferry seal of approval?
Mr. Ferry.
He's shaking his head no.
Well, there's a plaque now, don't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm supposed to put it up?
Oh!
Don't ruin, don't ruin his project.
Is that from the old bridge?
Yes, that's from the old bridge, and that's what the plaque's going to be installed on.
On this?
Yes.
On this? Very good. I don't know if the camera can focus on this. That's a piece of granite, that vertical piece is, is from the, uh, the old bridge. We recycle everything in Dayton. Keep going, keep going.
Train gone, him.
Anyhow, that's a piece of granite.
We should have just given it to him to hold. It looks great, though. You did a really good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So where you going to college?
I'm going to Bridgewater State.
Oh, cool.
Oh, my old alma mater!
What are you going to study?
Congratulations.
Okay.
Good man.
That was my original major until I became a chemist.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice, nice job.
Definitely. I'm going to go hang out there.
Now, instead of Mr. Ferry keeping track of you, you'll have to keep track of Mr. Ferry.
Will do.
So now you're, all this, all the scouting stuff is all set too, so?
I just need to send in my book, and then I'll be all done.
Okay. We're going to have you back at some point in the near future, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's go to the Dighton Public Library Building Project presentation, so. I want to know who moved the podium, though. I saw you doing it wrong, didn't you? Did you move the podium?
The culprit. Who moved it?
Honey, you need a permit to move it, though.
You need a permit to move it? I violated another permit. We moved it so that we could get the camera over there to get to, to focus on it. We assumed that camera hits that spot.
Just giving you a hard time.
Oh, okay. Big stage presence, you were a selectman.
No, I can't see the screen.
I can spice her back. You've seen this presentation before, Mr. Ferry. Spice her back. Thank you for having us again. Um, you know, we have listened to you, we have, we have...
Why don't you introduce who you are and stuff?
I'm Charlie Pilata, project manager with P3 for the library project. Um, and this is Drayton Fair and Mallory Dempsey with LLB Architects. We have assisted the library trustees and the library building committee in producing a grant application so that the town of Dighton will be eligible for a grant which comes up every eight-year cycle. And, you know, we, we didn't want to miss the date, and when we sent, sent it in initially, it was clearly not, not enough discussion about it. So we have listened to the Board of Selectmen, and we have been having meetings and public forums and, and still trying to get the word out. So this, tonight, hopefully, will be played over and over again so people can see exactly what it is we're doing here. So Drayton's going to talk about the actual building and the project. I'm going to talk just briefly about the program. So the program has been around since nineteen eighty-six. It has assisted two hundred libraries in the, in the Commonwealth, and it is a program that starts with the library trustees trying to plan what their library should be twenty years from the application date. So what will the library need for twenty years? And that is done through a construction program that, through, through the MBLC. When the MBLC goes back and forth with the trustees, it's not something that they can just go in and say, "We want this, we want this, we want this." There are standards that they have, that they want to ensure that certain rooms are certain size based on the population and based on the circulation numbers that the library has. Once that's complete, they get, they go to the grant planning stage, which is what this is for the construction grant. You hire the OPM, the architect, and the baseline to what the space needs becomes is that grant, that approved construction grant from the water library commissions that the trustees put together. On this particular site, as you know, we're pretty tight. We cannot build on the land that was once Seneca's, and we're keeping that as parking lot. So trying to get that program on that site while listening to the input that we had all the way through, which was to, to save the facade as much as possible, is, is, is how we got to what you're about to see. Should you be successful in the first grant round, and there are thirty-three libraries vying for the funds in the first grant round of this eight-year cycle, so they'll fund it as the legislature funds it, and they'll, this grant round stays open until that last library is funded. Should you be in the first grant round, and they expect eight libraries, eight to ten libraries to be in the first grant round, should you be in that list, you'll find out July twentieth. So July twentieth, all of the cities and towns' libraries are going to be looking at the list to see who's at the top, who's at the bottom, and it's, and it's based on need, and it's also divided up by size. Smaller libraries need, middle libraries need, and larger libraries need. So if you're in the, in the top list and you're in this first grant round, the community will then have six months to appropriate funds to match the grant. So the two votes that are coming up at the town meeting are non-committal votes, they don't appropriate any money, they are basically approving the schematic design, and schematic root word is scheme, which means that it can be twisted and turned as we go through the process, and also to have town meeting authorize the grant application. So that's a key component that has to happen, these two votes have to happen for you to be one of the thirty-three. Right now, you're one of the thirty-three. That vote needs to occur by June fifteenth. So that's...
There's a doubt, there's a question on the warrant?
Right.
Meeting on June fifth.
Right. June fifth, we know, that's where, I, I'm...
Threading it out.
Pretty, pretty excited about it, so.
I think, I think, I want to add to that, I think it's important for people to really understand, the June fifth vote does not provide any funding for this library. This only provide, only gives us the opportunity to move forward to see if the, the state will, will fund their portion of our project.
And you will be, you will receive a grant, there's no question you receive a grant. The question is, when will you receive the grant? Do you receive the grant year one, year two, year three, year four? And when you get that magic letter that says you've received your grant, at whatever that date is, you have six months from that date to, to make your appropriation. You know, town meeting, two-thirds vote if it's within the levy limit, town meeting, two-thirds vote, and ballot if it's excluded. So that's, that's the next, that would be the next step. But this vote is just a, just a, allowing us to grab money from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They want to give the town of Dighton money. They want to, they want to help your library. Your libraries need some work, it's small, and I think when Drayton is done, you're going to be hopefully happy with the end result, and hopefully we have a positive vote at, at the June fifth town meeting. So I'll answer any questions you have after Drayton's done, if it's related to the process, and Drayton will answer any questions regarding the design.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Again, my name is Drayton Fair, I'm with LLB Architects, and I'm here with my colleague Mallory Dempsey. So we have the pleasure of presenting to you the, the building plans for the library. We've been excited to work in Dighton, it's a very special town, and has a beautiful little library that has served the town well for many, many years, but it is, it is well past time that the library really sort of was, was brought up to, to current and future standards for library, for library standards. The way that the process starts is that the library and the library staff create a building program. They work with the standards from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners to write and come up with the growth required for the library for the next twenty years. Once that has been turned into the MBLC and accepted by the MBLC as basically a sort of an instruction list, if you will, we come in and work with the library to take that written document and translate it into architecture. So that written document has, you know, how many volumes we want to increase, or how many, how many seats we need, and we work with the library on each space to, to, to provide each room and space in the library to, to meet that building program. So your existing library right now is on two basic levels, a main level, which is, which is up about three and a half, four feet from the ground, so it's very, it is accessible via a ramp, but the original building wasn't accessible, I hate it kept accessible. So the main level and the basement level, whereas, as you may know, the, the children's department is on the, is in the basement level, and the adult collection is on the main level. So the new building program is, is about four times that size. So we're trying to create a building that is on a very small site, about four times the size of your existing library. As Dan mentioned, we are keeping within the property lines of the library site itself. The Seneca property is here with the parking, and we are building right up to the property lines. It's really trying to squeeze the, the largest, the, the library apartments on the site. But you can see, we kept the, the basic outline of the original building here, and you'll see as we go forward, we've tried to keep the feel of the existing library as well. Going back very quickly, we have reconfigured the parking lot a little bit, trying to keep the maximum amount of parking on that site. There is a retaining wall along this side of the site, coming up close to that property line to allow for a couple more spaces than, than we presently have. Walking through the building, there'll be a new entrance here, coming right off the parking, and a, a small entry lobby. You'll be able to walk right into at grade the new large meeting room. This is a, this is a program space which the library really doesn't have now, and is, is, is essential for, for library programs and for community meetings in, in many communities. So again, coming in right at grade for the new program meeting room, that can be separated, so that can be used after hours as well. Into an entry lobby here where you, there would be an elevator right here to get you up half a level to the main level of the library. Now, the main level of the library will match the original main level of the library. The original library, basically, the outline is about right here. And we're going to...
Can I, short a second? Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the entire time the camera has not been on the presentation. Is it supposed to be on it?
It would be nice if you, if the camera could get to the, get to the, there you go.
Okay.
Ooh.
Is there a way to zoom?
Yeah. There you go, that's, that's better.
A little bit better?
It's starting to work.
It stays still, it should be okay.
Good point, I wasn't even looking, yeah. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Gable.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, that's quite all right. We were, we were tired of looking at Drayton. I don't have to. So the, the outline of the original building is here, and again, the, the main level has been brought up to match the original, uh, level of the original library. So coming up, some steps here or via the elevator here, the new circulation desk is right here, so they have got a great view of the library, a great supervisory view of the library. We try and plan libraries with the maximum amount of space with the minimum number of staff. And the entire adult collection will be on this level. The, the circulation workroom is here, directly across from the circulation desk. The director's office and staff room are along this, this wall. There are small cozy nooks for reading magazines and reading books. The fiction collection, the new book collection is, is right up front, the nonfiction collection is here, and there's a new quiet study room off in the back corner. Main public computer's over here. So the entire adult collection is on this new level. Going upstairs via elevator, you'd arrive upstairs via elevator here or by the stairs here, and there are public toilets on the up, upper level as well. There's a local history room in this corner on the second level, a family toilet, and the children's library will be upstairs on the upper level. So instead of being in the basement as they have been for years, they get the, the best spot in the library up in the, up in the penthouse. There's a new teen, young adult collection up here as well, that can be, that's accessed right off the upstairs lobby, so they don't feel like they're going through the children's area to get to the, to the teen area, but it can be well supervised by the, the youth services library in, in, in children's area through some, through some glass walls. And a new children's program room as well on this, on this level, so the kids have a place to, to have a story and, what story are in crafts. So this is the, the elevation from the parking lot and the main, the main door in. Again, entering at grade and then coming up a level. What we've tried to do is really keep the spirit of the original building. The original building itself is only one story tall, and with this new two-level library, we've had to add to the top, but in, in the location of the original building, we're trying to match the window pattern and the material pattern of the original building, keeping sort of the, the line of the original roof here while popping up a new second story. Our meeting room is here, and then, and then the, the building folds around to the back. Now, because we're building up to the property line on, on three sides, those walls have to be fire-rated, so that's why you don't see a whole lot of windows on those sides, and it has to be made with a, a fire-resistant material. So a, a quick perspective rendering of, of what we think the, the building is going to look like as, as we drive in, trying to use materials to, and shapes to, to break down the scale of it so it, so it matches and fits into the residential scale of, of the village. So, that's where we are. As Dan said, we're very excited about the grant application being announced. There is certainly a need in Dighton for an updated library, and we are just thrilled to have been a part of it.
A couple things, I know there's, you know, this, for those of you that don't know, this was a, originally a Carnegie-funded building, it was, was nineteen ten, nineteen ten.
Nineteen ten, yeah.
Yeah, so it's been in, in place for over a hundred years, and Dighton's changed it in the last hundred years, so.
Never bought a library?
Ever. Like a police station.
So I see you're trying, you're trying to maintain that, that original design. And I think, am I correct, that some of the stuff inside, you're also going to maintain that same look of the wood that's in there now?
We are, we're going to salvage as much of the, of the wood as we can and recreate some of the features like the fireplace and window trim on the inside, so it still has that, has the feel of the original building.
And the other thing, I would, if anybody's interested, I would, I would go down there and look at our current library, and you can really appreciate that we need, we need something different down there. The one thing that happened, you guys can film me and help with this too, but, you know, I know they used to have a youth program down in the basement, and then a while ago, because of the fire hazard and the lack of proper egress, they had to close that down. So those teens now have really no place to go, no place, there's no place for them to go, so I think it, it's really important to consider those kinds of things, but at least go take a look at it, you can see, see what it looks like, because it's really jammed in there.
I have, I have one remark about that, you know, the town recently made a social media page, various social media pages where we post events and things like that. Half the events are, I can honestly say, library events.
Right.
So the library is really important for bringing everybody together, especially all the events that you guys do for the kids. As I type these events up and I put them on social media, I wonder where you're having them, because I have been to a couple meetings in the library. If you get four people in there, I mean, you are shoulder to shoulder. And I'm, I'm not even being dramatic, that is, that is, okay, a little dramatic, but, you know, the point is that it's cramped. The other thing I'd like to say is, I heard a lot when the police station vote was approaching about, "Oh, couldn't we get money from the state for this?" And I heard that a lot, and so I just want to, want to say to those people who asked me that question, if you're going to ask that question about the library, the answer is yes, we can, and yes, the library has applied for that money. So you're actually, if we get the grant, and Mr. Pilata said we have a good chance, and I believe him, then we actually have a chance for the state to basically subsidize the renovation and expansion project on the current existing structure. So I think that that, that's a really good thing, and I think that addresses the concerns of folks who don't want to have to pay as a town for a hundred percent of a renovation project, and I understand that.
But just be, but again, we need to be real clear, what, what we're going to vote on, on the June fifth annual town meeting is no funding involved, just gives them the opportunity to submit the grant application to see if we get on the list. If we get on the list, then we'll be coming back and then the town can make it.
You'll get on the list, and they'll tell you what your grant amount will be, and your situation here, you're, we project you're going to get a little bit more than fifty percent, so for every dollar of this project, fifty cents is going to be coming from the governor, and that's never a bad thing. As a town, we did, put together FAX figures on this particular cost of this library, and the total cost of the library in the grant application is seven million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four. So approximately, approximately four million is being paid for by, four point two million being paid for by the Commonwealth, three point eight million approximately, and we don't, we won't know the exact numbers till they give the grant back, because they... And we don't, we won't know the exact numbers until they give the grant back, because they, they can, they can add and subtract at will, but they give us guidelines to, to, to discuss them. These are pretty good, this is a pretty good billion, a profitable cost.
What's the total square feet now, and what will the total square feet be?
It's approximately three thousand square feet now, on, on two levels, and the new total is about twelve thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine.
What I have, again, twelve thousand?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-nine.
With expansion.
Do you want to know the cost per foot?
Yeah.
Total, total project cost per foot is six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. The actual construction cost, four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, which is...
Is that, I mean, is that a reasonable number compared to what you normally see in libraries?
That's standard for right now.
That is, that is...
Sounds like...
...very well standard for what we're seeing right now.
What's the difference between the six-forty-eight, and what's the other number, four-hundred?
Four, four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, seventy-five cents is just the construction.
Breaking one...
Libraries have a lot of FFNE, so FFNE meaning fixtures, furniture, and equipment. Just a little, just...
When the awarding of the grants through the rounds, does there decrease any amount of money that we receive? And how long does the, is it like, you know, one to four years? If there's an opportunity to receive funding? And does it, is it a decrease in the amount of funding for every year you've lost if you don't get monies in the first round?
No, they're going to announce the amount you're going to get in the list.
So, if you don't receive monies in the first round?
But, but they, you're going to announce the whole grant list. What they're going to do is fund the first eight. So, the whole thirty-three towns will be listed. So, and once they, once they come back, once you're, once they've funded the next three or four, see, libraries are tough, because a lot of towns vote no on their debt exclusion. So, in that first eight, if one or two miss, it automatically goes to nine and ten. So, the amounts of the grant are known that you're going to receive. You just don't receive it until the funding is in place. They won't let you receive it until the funding's in place. So, you know, that's just the system.
So, if we don't get funded in the first round in, this year, will it just carry over to the second year, depending on the priorities?
Yes. Now, the good news, the good news about this is that the numbers that we just rattled off are numbers for year three. Okay? So, they have escalation built in for the two years that are not, you know, if we don't make it in the first year, we don't make it in the second year, and we make it in the third year. So, they allow us to carry three years of escalation, and that is built into those numbers that I just gave you. So, it, it's, it's, it's sort of a protect, if you, you're at the tail end of the list, it can be tough if it's years out, because costs keep going up. And it's, it's, you know, we're bound by prevailing wage laws, bidding laws, public procurement, and I don't need to tell you what that does to the average cost of a simple project. So, in Massachusetts, we seem to want to build public construction in the most difficult possible way possible.
We know that, yeah.
But that being said, you know, those numbers are, you know, fiscal year 2020. So, if we're in the first round, it's actually better for us.
Yeah.
Because the construction will be less, but the grant will stay the same. So, your percentage will actually slightly ground. You'll appropriate it, but it won't be spent. Okay?
Well, again, just remember, if we, if we approve it on June 5th, that will just make the grant go forward, and then we'll talk more after that, after June 20th to see if it gets funded.
We are, no, I, I want to make this abundantly clear. The town of Dayton is not eligible for this grant if the town meeting does not vote yes. So, if the town meeting votes yes, you are eligible for the grant. If not, you're looking at eight, approximately eight years. Sometimes it's seven, sometimes it's eight.
And can I just ask you guys a logistical question? Do you guys want us to post this on the website for people who maybe didn't watch it or, or anything like that? The PDF of the PowerPoint?
That, that's a library trustee's question.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I would think that they would want the plans posted to a length.
But anyway, the key is as much information as we can get to the public, so that they know what's going on and don't, don't listen to rumors, get the facts, so, yeah, so.
Have the plans been reviewed by any other boards in town? Like, you're going to build right up to the boundary, so there's got to be some kind of a waiver, I assume?
We're going to need a waiver. We did meet with the planning board, zoning board, I'm sorry, zoning board, appeals chairman, and we met with the building inspector onsite, as we were discussing where to go, how to go, and how to go about it.
There's only one in Butter, right?
There's one, well, yeah, there's one in Butter technically to the right side, looking at the front of the building to the right.
To the west.
There's in Butter to the, to the, to the east, but the parking lots between, between the two. But this was the solution that we came up with. I mean, at, we, at one point, were looking to try and save the building, and I, even the, even the building inspector, they weighed in that, you know, this, this building's really served the town well, and it's, it's time.
Oh, that permit will happen after?
Yeah. So, this, like I said earlier, schematic design, as you can see, he's got colors, and he's got some shapes and some materials. If, if some of that has to change due to local preference or due to comments, as, as we go through all of the local boards, we can do that. That's, that's part of the process. So, this, the program can't change. You know, if we switch the room from right side to the left side, we can do that, as long as we still have the two rooms that we're smart to. So, that's basically, we're stuck with the site, with the grant application and the vote of the town meeting, and we're stuck with the basic size of the program. We can vary up to five percent. Okay?
Great. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Well, that was informative, and we hope everybody's in a really good mood on June 5th.
In the meantime, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. We have a form on our website for questions if the public wants to ask.
Is that on the town, it's on the town website?
On library website.
They have a separate.
Library.org.
Okay. Daytonlibrary.org?
Yeah.
It links from our website.
Okay. Excellent.
And we will post the YouTube of this meeting as well. Yep, no problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for the presentation.
My apologies for the rocky start.
No need. It's in the past.
Would you give Karen your name, so she has the question, please?
You guys are welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to.
Just write it in.
Because it's not going to get much more interesting than that. Anyway. Next, any public input? I don't know. I kind of went back and forth with that. You guys came in, so, okay. The next item on the agenda is to discuss the town administrator's search and update. Situation we face at the moment is that we had, we had identified four very, we thought were very good candidates. We lost the first three, and they took other positions in other places. So, we had one candidate, we're going to, we headed down to two. We're going to interview those two a week from tonight, and then one of them contacted us on Monday and said he's no longer in the running. So, we're down to one. One of the ones that we originally picked. So, I guess our discussion tonight is, how do we proceed from here? Do we, do we just call this one candidate in for an interview at our selectman meeting, or do we go back to square one and re-advertise?
I don't, I, we can't, I don't think we can have just an interview. Why would we have an interview with one person? That would be the only person, right?
Well, to, to re-interview and make sure he's the right fit, because what we've also decided to do is bring in a couple of other people to help us with the interview process.
Correct.
One is, one is the town administrator up in Eastern, and the other is Ed Schwartz, who's our chairman of our finance committee. So, they're going to, they wouldn't have a, a vote, but we want to get them here just to...
As they're both Dayton residents.
Yeah, give their perspective on what, what they think of the candidates, so, so...
Is there anybody, so, I like, I, I'm okay with the one that we chose that we agreed on last week, okay? Well, the two, but then now it's just one. My question, I guess, for my colleagues is, is there anybody of the, I guess, four?
That are left.
That are left, that you would want to interview? I guess that's the question.
Well...
As a finalist.
My view on that is that, just my view only, is that we, we already went through the resumes, and we, we decided that these four were our top four. Therefore, the next four that are on there are not our top, top picks. So, I don't think, personally, I don't think we want to settle for something other than what we really want. I think the other thing which is important to, to keep in mind, this process started in February, and now we're in the middle of May. And so, we have a, basically, a three-month span where we weren't able to act on, on these positions, and that's why you lose the top candidates, because good people, you know, find, find jo, other jobs. And so, I would not be adverse to kind of, I feel, I feel bad if we do this, because it was approved by town meeting a year ago. But we would, if we did go out to advertise, we talked about it last week also, we would expedite that process, and I think we would not necessarily use a search committee, but I think we, as this board of selectmen, would be that search committee and just go directly to the candidates that we felt were a priority. So, I don't know what your thoughts?
I don't remember the other four. I mean, I would have to look at them again. I don't know if any of them had town administrator experience.
Some, one of them did.
Have them here. One has no TA experience, although he was Plymouth County Administrator, so he has some knowledge of, of that.
Administrator. He's been an administrator of some, you know, in some fashion.
The two that we had last week, of the two that we had, and one's gone, only one of them was a town administrator. Was it the town administrator that dropped out?
Correct.
So, the candidate we have left is not a town administrator.
Correct. Okay.
He has another position in government. We have another one here who's had numerous jobs as a town administrator, but I don't, but, you know, nothing of any length. They're all less than a year, and so I don't feel comfortable with that.
But I feel, I agree. I, I have concerns about that, but just my personal opinion about that, is that something that if we would ask that individual when they're in front of us? Because there may be, you know, I, I wouldn't want to presume.
Right. This one, this other one here, he was, has no TA experience. He was a selectman, and this one here is also, has no TA experience, and he was also a selectman. So, as I said, they were not, we picked those out as our candidates, and my, my feeling with hiring somebody to this position is, they really need to be somebody that, you know, I've hired a lot, hired a lot of people in my career, and you kind of get that, that feeling that they're the right fit for you, for you, and I, and I didn't get that sense with any of the, the other ones. So, you know, I think this is such an important, such a very important position, particularly as the first time that Dayton will have a town administrator, that we do our very best to get it right and get the right person in here, so...
It's all, I just feel like it's tough to make a decision without having had that conversation. So, I feel like I'm just looking at words on a paper, essentially. So, it's a little bit, you know, not having talked to these people at all, other than like, you know, a hello and "nice to meet you."
I think the ones that don't have, I mean, I don't think if they don't have TA experience, I think, well, the one we were going to interview doesn't have TA experience, but he's a lot of government experience.
I would, I would be okay with the individual who had a little bit of TA experience. For me personally, out of the, those four, that person for me would be the only one I feel like I could support individually to be the next town administrator. So, I agree with you that the people who don't have experience, maybe we just shouldn't consider.
I guess I, I guess my, I want to ask the question this way. If we, we looked at eight resumes that were forwarded to us from the search committee, and we didn't, out of those eight, we prioritize them, and the four, these four were not in that top group, why would we, why do we think they're in that top group now by default?
I understand, well, I, I mean, we're calling it a top group, but, I mean, for me, it's just a matter of preference. So, I agree with you, and I understand what you're saying. My, I guess I feel, like I said, we all, I thought we all agreed that out of the eight, we'd be okay with any of them. So, I don't feel like, just because we didn't get our top, or what we call, would call our preferred pick, that means that they're not good enough now.
Yeah, well, I, I would, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't say that I was, would be comfortable with any one of them. No, clearly wouldn't.
I don't think any of these rise to the level of the floor we saw. Let me put it that way.
Yeah, I don't think so.
That's true.
Absolutely not. Let me update, we had one candidate that had already been a town administrator, started the first one in town, and he was absolutely perfect for Dayton, but we got to him about a week too late.
I noticed we have some, we actually have some selectmen who applied, quite, quite frankly. We don't need another selectman, folks. And I don't mean that in a derogatory sense, but, um...
I mean, what we're looking, I mean, we're looking for a professional town administrator, and I think, certainly, maybe as a selectman, you can do it, but I think we're looking for somebody who's not, not political, it's not a political thing, and so...
You need a good manager. That's what you need. You need an experienced manager with municipal finance and municipal contract and munis, all that municipal stuff that's different from the private sector.
I think the other, other problem perhaps is, you know, the, the position was advertised for ninety thousand, and we have found, and doing a little research, that's clearly not going to give us the kind of person we need. So, we're, we're actually asking for more money in the budget to, to have a level that would be higher than that, depending on experience and all that other kind of stuff. So, so when you advertise it, you put that, you put that dollar figure in there, anybody making more than that's not going to apply for the job. And so, and, and there's very few town administrators that are making ninety thousand.
And we're competing with towns that are offering more money, and they've already had town administrators, so...
And there's a lot of competition out there right now, a lot of people looking for town administrators. So, I just feel like we should start over, do it, do it right, expedite the process.
But I think we should give ourselves, if that's what we're going to do, I do think we should set like a timeline.
Absolutely.
Like, so that it doesn't happen that, you know, because you know how time is. You wake up and, oh my God, it's been a year, and it doesn't feel like that every day, you know?
I mean, a timeline that I would look at, you know, certainly, my, my suggestion would be that we advertise it for probably two weeks in the appropriate places. We screen those applicants within the next week to ten days, and then we start talking, getting people to come in for interviews. And now we're there, we're going to keep it, the whole process down to four to six weeks maximum. I don't think that's unreasonable for someone, but you can't go on three months, because people are not going to...
A town administrator approached me at a meeting I was at, at MMA, and said, "How are you guys doing with getting a town administrator?" I said, "Not well, because the candidates that we would have, let's say, ranked one, two, whatever, were gone before we even, in one case, even got a chance to interview the person." And what was said to me was, "Maybe what you need to do is to get in touch with the MMA personnel something or other group and say to them, or her, whoever runs this of MMA, 'Do you know of any town administrators that are, are looking, actively looking? They could be employed already, but because we're looking for somebody with experience, we're talking this kind of money, you got any ideas to help us?" And I said, "Oh, I'll keep that in mind. This is not, I'm not talking about advertising in the beacon again, because I know you have to have the deadlines and all that good stuff, but this would be, in addition to advertising, if that's the route we're going to go..." if that's the route we're going to go, contacting this person and doing exactly what I just said. We're looking for a town administrator. We have difficulty getting one that doesn't slip through our fingers. Do you know anybody that is looking to make a move? Do you know of anybody who is looking for a job? That this, this person would know through the MMA, because they do have this personnel group, and town administrators belong to it. So, it might be another way to get the word out.
Absolutely. Yeah, I have also talked with a town administrator at the meeting I was at yesterday, and they used us, I don't know if it was a search firm, but somebody that works strictly with town administrators. So, I think the first question is, are we going to, are we going to start over? And then if we are, I think we need to think about a strategy, and then come back and put that strategy, because I think all these things you're bringing up right now, are things we need to think about, and we want to do that, and then we have a real, precise strategy on how we're going to move this thing forward with some timelines, a timeline.
Where would we advertise it? If we didn't go back to the Beacon?
Well, this particular town administrator, I was talking, he got hired, and he gave me the name. They used a search consultant who deals with town administrators. I don't know what the fees are or anything like that, but that's one way to expedite it, and also you get a little bit of pre-screening done that way.
We could also, if we, if we decide to contact the person who was, I'll call it the contact person, like, the chair, the committee I'm on has an MMA person.
Sure.
So, if we contacted that person, who's, I think it's called the MMA Personnel Association or the Small Town Administrators Group, they could certainly get it out to every, every community.
Well, they could give us advice.
Or email, or they might even say, "Give us some information, we'll just spread the word." But somebody, the person that approached me said that she knew of a community that had difficulty, and some names were given to them, and they did contact them, say, "Are you interested in applying?" And so, it was just another way to get it out without going through the amount of time it takes to advertise.
See, I think too, I mean, you know, penny wise, pound foolish, I think we need to do the best job we can, use the best resources we can get. This is a very, very important position. So, we go that route, or we go to a consultant to help us with the search. We just want to make sure that we get the right, the right person.
Well, we might be able to do both.
I know.
Because there's no cost for the MMA one.
Right.
And if we just spread the word out, there may be somebody that might show some interest, and certainly, a firm that you're going to pay, if their headhunters, they're going to come back with, with good recommendations, because they want the fee.
Right.
Yeah.
No fee, no hire, no fee, so, absolutely. Okay, so, what's your pleasure?
What are we looking at for time?
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
Well, I'm thinking if we, you know, holidays coming up, I think if we could nail down our process, our strategy here in the next week, we could get that done. We could, we could probably get actively working on it, say, the middle of next week. And that process takes two weeks, you know, maybe three. And then, once we get names, we'll move absolutely as quickly as we can. We moved quick on these. It's just that, you know, we got them so, by the time the search committee was done with them, and by the time we got them...
Are we looking to have this person onboard by July 1st?
I don't think that's reasonable.
Well, appointed, appointed by July 1st, assuming they got to give notice to their, if they're currently employed.
Yeah.
Which means if we make the appointment by July the 1st...
It's only five weeks.
I know.
It's very tight. I mean, it could be our goal, I mean, I don't want to be unrealistic.
I would like that to be our goal on paper, at least, just because it's the start of the new fiscal year, and I get exactly what you're thinking about, and it makes sense to have that be the goal. So, I'm okay with that.
The MMA part, we can get through a phone call. To go, and to go through the agency, we've just got to say to them, "Look, you've got", whether it's two weeks or whatever, "We've got, we want this, we want candidates, you've got two weeks." Not only that, most of those agencies have lists of people.
Well, and you can get more than one, too. Pit them against each other, please, if you're watching.
Or they come up with the same one.
That, I mean, okay, I can live with that being our goal.
I think we should choose...
I don't want, I don't want to have an expectation that we can't meet, that's my concern.
Well, the goal line...
The goal line can change.
Meetings in June, we can always have a special.
That's right.
But what I'm saying is, if we can get through the process, and the goal being, we will have selected somebody and offered the job, and hopefully, they will have accepted honor before July the 1st. Doesn't mean they're going to be walking through the door to work. They're going to have to give notice, or unless the person we get is currently either out of a job, or is coming from some other place, or whatever.
Can I make another suggestion, too? Because I've seen a recurring theme every time we've done this now. There is no, and this isn't anybody's fault, but I noticed in the original job description, it sounds like what we've all agreed on tonight and last week, is that we want someone with TA experience.
Yes.
It doesn't say that in the ad. So, that's why we're getting people...
Well, this time, we're going to say...
Correct. It should say explicitly what we want.
Town administrator experience.
Nobody else will be considered. And I think then you weed out the people who, "Oh, but I've been a selectman." No. Town administrator, that's it.
No, we don't want to have to train anybody.
But we can't, I've never been a town administrator.
The only thing they will have to learn is coming through the door, they know how to be a town administrator somewhere.
Yep.
They're going to learn how the town of Dayton operates, and then they're going to be able to take that information and put this into some kind of a cohesive organization or whatever, to do, to do the job.
And they're going to have to deal with us.
Yeah. They have to learn our ways. You heard that.
But...
All right, friends.
I agree with that.
I will volunteer to call MMA, whatever the organization is.
Let's get a motion on, how we're going to proceed, and then we can do that in detail later.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, again, seek candidates for the position of town administrator. Limit that search to experienced town administrators, with the goal of having someone appointed honor before July 1st, and that we will use all available resources. Best way to describe it.
Public sector, private sector?
Whatever, whatever, whatever.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Did you get that, Karen?
Okay, let's take a vote. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we, and we know that this process has been a long time process. It was approved at town meeting a year ago, and for that, we apologize that it didn't happen sooner, but I think, as I said earlier, I think it's very important that we do it right the first time, and get, you know, get the town administrator that we can, that can come in here and really act as a town administrator, so... Thank you. Okay. Next, we got a bunch of appointments. Okay, let's do, we're going to have something on here...
All I can say is, that number one candidate that we never got had better not turn up in the round of applications, because I'll kill him. I'll be driving here two weeks ago, a month ago.
So, we have an item on here to discuss, approve the guidelines for public records law requests, and I, I think, I know I haven't seen the document, so I think I would like to hear a motion to table that to another meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. On favor?
Oh, before that, I just want to say, yeah, totally happy to, I just want people to, to let people know, I did work with town clerk Suma Deras on this, so, you know, there was coordination between the Board of Selectmen, so I'm totally happy to table it, and then we can discuss it next week before, you know, have that discussion.
I also think that when we actually put this on the agenda, to act on it, that the town clerk be here, because there may be questions that we can't answer or that come up.
Correct, yep. And this is, just so everybody else knows, and maybe I should say this, this is pertaining to the Weed Whacker Bill that had some more stringent public records laws handed down to us from the state. So, that's what this is pertaining to, and we'll discuss it more next week.
And I was at a meeting yesterday up in Boston, and they spent a lot of time talking about the public records law, and we have some things we need to discuss here, as selectmen policies in town, about things like emails and messaging and that kind of stuff, so we'll get to that later. Okay. We have a resignation...
Oh, no, we have a motion in the second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Glad you guys are here. Lose control real quick. Okay, resignation of Scott Haskell from his position of page custodian at the Dayton Public Library.
I have an open position, and I just wanted to advance to be able to...
Oh, so you wanted us to act on this first, before you, okay, I understand.
Is this the person that has held the job?
Yes.
Okay. This is from Scott Haskell to Jocelyn, the director of the library, and "I would like to inform you that I'm resigning from my position as page custodian. I received a promotion at my other place of employment, will be going there full-time. Thank you very much for the opportunity for professional and personal development that you have provided me during the last five years." Well, I've been there five years. "I've enjoyed working for the Dayton Public Library, appreciate all the support you've provided me with, and there is no one to immediately fill this position I'm willing to work during the transitionary period with the understanding that I'm on my way up." So, it's, done a great job, I guess. Been there five years, I guess he has to have, yeah.
Can I ask you a logistical, because now I'm just curious?
Yeah, I can hear it.
If you, would you need a second custodian if, because with the library four times there?
When I approached the trustees, what they agreed to do is, we went out to offer a company, and the company that was chosen was M&amp;S, the rest of the town facilities. So, we restructured this position to be purely a page position to help with staffing.
Okay. Yep. And you took away that custodian?
Yeah, because it is weird. It's a weird...
It is, yes.
Yes, it worked out, but it's a special person to be both of those jobs.
Yeah.
And it doesn't need to be like that.
Okay.
I'll take the motion that we accept the resignation of Scott Haskell from his position as page custodian, with appreciation for his years of service to the town.
I second that.
Okay, motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reluctantly. Okay.
So, it's okay for me to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all your help today.
Oh.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for advocating for the library, because I personally think it's a very important feature of our town, so...
We'll get that material online for you guys.
Thank you.
Sorry to take away most of your in-person audience.
It's not new to us.
They cleared the room.
This gentleman is always here.
Mr. Higgins.
Higgins, okay, yeah.
We're going to put you on a committee or something.
This is the best way for an resident to learn about the town.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Really, if you want to get on the committee, we got a lot of...
We were serious about that.
Have you ever been a town administrator?
Okay, I want to, we have appointments here, we have an appointment for Mr. Higgins to go on the...
This is why, this is why people don't come to the meetings, because you're on a committee.
We have a number of appointments. We have a appointment of Andrew LaPointe to serve on a cable committee, cable television committee.
Hello, if you're watching.
So, I would entertain a motion to point Mr...
LaPointe.
LaPointe.
LaPointe, Andrew LaPointe.
To the cable television committee.
So moved.
And I was second that.
Any discussion? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Andrew, you're on.
Yes, I do just want to say, Andrew is on the younger side, but I did speak to his mom, super, he comes from a good family, the Carla Ponce, and he has a lot of experience. So, even for a young kid, he has a lot of experience, and I think that, that the cable committee will benefit from it, and I'm really excited to them. So, Dave, we're getting new help, we've listened.
And then we have another appointment to the cable committee, Jack McWork.
Thank you.
And Jack McWork, he actually came in tonight, and I think he's down there now, learning a little bit about what goes on down there. And so, he just graduated from DR. He's going to go to Johnson and Wales, I think, I'm pretty sure of that. And so, it would entertain a motion.
I'll take that motion. To point Jack.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Jack, you are now down on the cable also.
I just wanted to thank the, I think, four residents who graciously volunteered to be on the cable committee. We really appreciate it. It is an important service, it's the way that we keep everybody informed, because as you can see, we don't have 7,100 people in the audience, so people are watching at home, or not watching at all. So, we really do thank you. It's very important. It was one of my things that I really advocated for, and we really do appreciate it, to all our volunteers as well.
Absolutely. And we also, do we, do we appoint someone else from BP to that? I don't think we have them on here, but...
The table?
Isn't that, okay. There's another student, I believe, from Bristol Plymouth, that's going to also put an application into working cable, so that'd be great. So, they've gone from very little help to quite a bit of help. And one of the goals of the cable, cable committee, too, is, you know, to broadcast these meetings and to record them, other meetings that we have in town hall, but also to maybe go out and be able to record some of the other things that happen in town, like the culture festival, or graduations, or, you know, events that are going on around town. So, this group sounds like they would, might be interested in doing that, so... Okay, we have another appointment of Chris Chadney to the Green Community Grant Committee. So, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Welcome, Chris.
We now have Chris on two committees, because he's with the Cemetery Commission.
And Chris comes, Mr. Higgins, Chris comes to all of our grant community meetings, so it was just a matter of time before he volunteered.
We have a resignation of Christopher Reddy from the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, it's a memo here to the Board of Selectmen. "I'm often amazed at the speed at which time seems to pass. I've been a member of the Insurance Advisory Committee since inception many years ago. In effort to save money for the town and the employees that I represent, I have attended insurance meetings around the county. I respectfully decline reappointment to the Insurance Committee. Now is the time to allow a younger voice take my seat on the committee. However, I intend to be available to help guide my replacement. Our replacement has not been determined in the very near future. A new face will be sworn to my position. I thank you for having the opportunity to serve on the committee, and I know that the Insurance Advisory Committee will be in good hands." Okay.
I move to accept the resignation of Chris Reddy from the Insurance Advisory Committee with appreciation.
I second.
And what, we'll clarify with Chris, but he says he declines reappointment, which would be July 1st, so I assume he'll serve until June 30th, so... Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We have the site map for the town of Dayton's new website, and I don't know, are we ready to discuss that, or are we going to table that till...
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead. Brett's been the one that's been working on this, so why don't you go ahead and...
So, a site map for everyone who's not, I recently made my first website, so now I know what a site map is, but before I wasn't familiar. A site map is basically the roadmap for your website. So, it's not the design, it's how things are laid out in terms of the links, the pages, et cetera, et cetera. I think my recommendation for the town website, so before we proceed to content migration, which is the last step, would be to simply accept the site map as is, and they will eventually train me, and I believe they will train Karen, I will train everybody else, you, Mr. Chairman, selecting live, if she'd like as well. she'd like as well, and we can modify it after. I think it's best to accept it as is, because if we ask them to take things out and then find out we need it, they will charge us for each individual content migration.
And once we get, once we, for, once we get trained, then we can do all that work ourselves.
A hundred percent. It's probably actually better that we do it ourselves, because then the people who know what they need are the ones in control of how the website works. So I do think it's best and just have them migrate everything over and then we can modify it to our, you know, customization as we'd like.
Okay, with me.
Somebody wanna make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so now they'll move to the content migration and everything should be ready within the next couple of weeks.
And then, then we'll, yeah, we'll look at it and we'll, we'll.
Modify it.
We'll charge, yeah, we'll charge the department heads with doing what they do after, after they get trained. Okay, we have a data authorization form for the municipal energy program. This, this is an authorization form just for us to provide this company, aren't you, you know more about than I do.
Couple of weeks ago, I attended an MMA meeting. MMA has a municipal energy agreement with Constellation Energy, and I went to the meeting, it was down at the Somerset Public Library, and there were some town administrators there, and what was discussed was an opportunity for communities to join this Mass Municipal Muni Energy Program with the intent of getting lower rates for municipal buildings. So right now, the town of Dyton Buildings are paying the same rate that all of us are that are in the aggregation program, or zero, .0949, and that rate goes through the end of this December and a new rate has been negotiated. Right now, the town of Somerset and I think the town of Halifax, those were the new contracts that were discussed that day. I know Somerset signed on for five years because they're getting a better rate. So what this form is, the person from Mass Municipal requested copies of all our electric bills for one month, and now what they want is, with this form, permission from the town of Dyton to contact the energy company that we have. Our billing comes through National Grid. We were getting power through Con Ed, but Constellation bought them out, so in order for MMA to do more research and try to come up with a rate more favorable to the municipality, meaning the buildings owned by the town of Dyton, they need permission to, to access our historical records, so I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we authorize and give permission for MMA to contact the various utility companies that they have listed here, so that they can get the data that they need in order to complete the study and come back with information for us. Once we have that information, we'll be discussing what kind of arrangements we can get, so we'll keep you updated on this. In the meantime, we will stay right where we are with the rest of you who have power rates under aggregation, but one community said they saved as much as one penny per kilowatt hour, which is a lot of money for the thousands and thousands of kilowatt hours that municipal building dues, so. So this is another, hopefully this is gonna be another benefit that we will have, and it's because we are active members in, in the MMA, and this is just something else that was brought to our attention that we're looking into.
So I guess they need a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I made the motion that we authorize you to sign the form.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we, do we have any other announcements? Oh, we have announcements.
Just write the regular, you know, the attached ones.
Because we're very short on time, but I'm gonna read the first one, because I never get. Trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office at 508-669-6431, if you have any, any questions or need more information. We talked about, see, Mr. Higgins just left before we could appoint him to one of these vacancies.
He knew it was not.
Historical Commission, the Land Use Committee, the Green Community Grant Committee, the Cemetery Commission. Also, Community Preservation has an opening for Historical Commission representative and a opening for a member at large, so. All those committees are very interesting too, so if you're interested, we certainly like that.
Green Communities is still, sorry.
Okay, no Green Communities, okay. The bulky item, Cripside Pickup is happening this week. Tags are available for sale in the Selectmen's Office. It'll follow the regular trash schedule, so I guess if your trash has already been picked up, you're out of luck, but if you got tomorrow, well, probably Friday, you can still get a tag. Okay, the Dyton Historical Society will also be holding plant sale on May 27th from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Dyton Historical, Historical Society, the Winslow Davis Museum located at 1217 William Street. Maps and historical memorabilia will also be available for sale. Anyone wishes to donate plants, please drop them off on Friday, May 26th, or early on the 27th. Please label them and leave them by the bulkhead. The Dyton Fire Association will be hosting a Toucha Truck Event on Saturday, June 3rd from 8:00 to 2:00 on the grounds of the Mannheim, New England. Free admission to the event, children get an up-close look and climb aboard many of the supersized vehicles. Dyton Fire Association will also be collecting donations for the Shriners Hospital for Children. You're on, Brett.
Mannheim will also be hosting a blood drive on Saturday, June 3rd, free pancake breakfast with a blood donation. The annual town meeting will be held at Dyton Middle School on June 5th, 2017, that is a Monday, at 7:00 PM. A special town meeting will be held prior to that meeting at 6:00 PM. A copy of the warrants will be mailed to all Dyton residents next week, and thank you so much, Karen, for coordinating that. The Board of Selectmen will begin their summer meeting schedule on June 7th. The final weekly meeting will occur on May 31st, which is next week. There will be no meeting on June 7th and every other week during the summer. Normal meeting schedule will resume on September 6th, 2017. The Community Preservation Committee will hold this annual public hearing on June 15th, 2017, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, I believe in the lower level. The Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution has new hours. Going forward, the hours will be 9, 8:00 AM, excuse me, to 9:30 AM. That is, again, 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM, and I will be sure to update that on the website and all of our other sites accordingly.
And don't forget about the culture festival, which happens on June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. There's a bunch of posters around town about it. If anybody's ever been, it's a great event.
And the Memorial Day Parade.
Yes.
Monday, May 29th, at the, it begins at the Rehoboth Council on Aging, which is, you would.
Bay State Road, 118, 10:15 AM, I assume weather permitting. If the weather is bad, maybe we'll have a ceremony at the gazebo like we had to do last year, but I guess we'll have to play it by ear.
And there'll also be, I don't know the timing though, I know our Veterans Agent will be having some small ceremony in the morning over here at our park.
Before?
Always does.
Is there any correspondence?
The other thing I want to say is about the parade, if you want to be in the parade and you haven't signed up, that's fine. If you just show up down there, if you have a group you want to march, or you want to march individually, or whatever, just show up and they'll fit you in the parade. Always a good event. Okay, do we have any correspondence? Nancy, report on the Center Street.
Oh, just, this is just very brief. Karen, have you contacted the residents about the W9s? Okay, just a quick update. Property owners involved with the Center Street sidewalk project, you will receive W9s in the mail. We need you to fill those out, just one of you, if the property is held jointly, for tax purposes. Fill it out and get it back to Karen as soon as possible, because we can't process the checks for the easement payments until we actually have those W9s in hand. Once we have those W9s, we will process payments and we will notify you to come in, and if the property is held jointly, both parties, husband, wife, or however it's held, must sign the forms, and we will have the easement forms and we will have the right-of-entry forms that I explained to you. And once you both execute those forms, we will hand you the check in payment of the easements that we have already negotiated with you. So, again, next thing you'll get is W9s, fill them out and get them back to Karen as soon as possible. Thank you.
In this project, for those that aren't aware, we're putting a sidewalk in over on Center Street from the, that entrance, that first entrance on the right to the aggie on up to 138. Nancy's done most of that project.
Champion.
Appreciate.
Absolutely.
Taking land, just grabbing land.
We love evidence, just kidding.
That's a little bit of open spaces, Jack.
I actually have a very brief report. Most of this is actually for Selectmen Goulart, because it just happened, I hadn't seen her. I went to the Board of Health meeting this evening, Marilyn Edge was there, and it was to clear up the non-criminal disposition. So what the Board of Selectmen needs to do, we finally got to the bottom of it, the current bylaw needs to be amended. So all that needs to happen is, the fee structure is specific to tobacco, so to be compliant with existing state regulations and have those be the thing that is, you know, presides over each case, we should just take the fee structure out and so that for each specific thing, for example, if it's tobacco, then it defaults to the state regulation on tobacco. If it's a building, issue it and default to the state regulation on the building.
Okay.
So that was Attorney Wilson's suggestion.
Why don't we?
It's not a bylaw, it's, it's a regulation.
But it is in the general bylaws under non-criminal disposition, and it's, and it should just be non-criminal disposition in general.
So why don't we get, why don't we do this? Why don't we get that bylaw or that regulation together and we'll come, come to the next meeting, we'll read it to show what the change has been, because.
And it doesn't need to be next meeting, I was just.
You can't change a bylaw that quickly, you're gonna have a public hearing anyhow, so.
We'll do all the right stuff and get that to people, so you understand.
We may not vote on it until the fall.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they said, actually.
Yeah, yeah, because we, it's not gonna make the warrant now.
No. Too late, the train left.
That's for sure.
Just very briefly, I went to a meeting up in Boston yesterday, it was about, it was in the procurement office of the Inspector General. There's a lot of, a lot of discussion on open meeting, on preventing fraud, waste, and abuse, and also.
Public records.
Public records, duh, yeah, big thing on public records. So we'll have more discussion about that, but it was a very, very worthwhile meeting and so we're gonna work on all that stuff. Any acknowledgements? And no minutes to approve. Okay, warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve warrant 47A-17 in the amount of $83,233.08 payroll. Warrant 47B-17, amount of $16,699.56. Warrant 47C-17 in the amount of $208,761.98. Warrant 47D-17 in the amount of $1,134,369.88, that's DR. Warrant 47E-17 in the amount of $2,854.47, the last of all being accounts payable and that's all dated May 24th.
I will second that, that was a mouthful.
You just spent tons of money.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All that money spent in one sentence.
One little vote.
We just, before nine o'clock, so any other discussion?
Just, I would just like to read a short poem, because it is Memorial Day, and when we had the first joint parade with Rehoboth, I was chairman of the board, and I read this poem, and a number of people remarked about it at the time, so I'm just gonna read this. This is really for Memorial Day. It's called "In Flanders Fields." "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row that mark our place, and in the sky the locks still bravely singing. Fly, scarce herd amid the guns below, we are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe. To you, from falling hands we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders Field."
Memorial Day is coming Monday and I think it's, it's a very important day, and hopefully people will reflect on what Memorial Day is all about, and I know, you know, it's not just about barbecues and about having a day off from work or whatever, it's really about those men and women in our country that have fought and died for our freedoms and our rights to have a free and, a free democracy, so I would ask people to reflect on that and if you have children, you might talk to them about it also, because I think it's important to have that going forward.
This was written by Dr. John McCray, who's a Canadian doctor in the military, and this was during the First World War. Not too long after I got to read this poem at that first joint parade, I actually visited the site where he wrote this poem, and it was in the Second Battle of Ypres in Belgium, but we also toured Flanders Fields. And obviously there's thousands of grave markers, but truly, Flanders Fields are rolling grasslands, like the only thing missing are horses and cows. Gorgeous area, very pretty. Peaceful, calm, no idea that so many people were killed there, you know? Just, yeah, but when you go there, it's like going to Omaha Beach or, you know.
I just want to thank all of our men and women. I come from a military family, you know, I just, you know, some people aren't gonna be there with their family on Memorial Day, so I will keep you all in my thoughts and prayers. You're all brave and I appreciate your sacrifices.
Good, thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.
Good night, Cable.
Thank you, Cable. Thanks to the new guys.
Yeah.